Well, good evening, everybody. First of all, I would like to just introduce myself. If you don't know, I'm Tony Lake Superintendent here. I want to welcome all of you to our candidate forum tonight. I want to thank you all for being here to learn more about our candidates. I also want to thank our candidates for being here to share some answers with us tonight as a community. And I also wanted to thank the League of Women Voters. They took this over for us about three years ago, running these forums or the district hosted forum. And so we've been very happy with that process. And so our moderator tonight is Vicki Turner. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to her to start asking some questions. Again, thank you all for being here.
All right. Thank you. Can you all hear me okay at the back? Good. So my name is Victoria Turner. I'm with the St. Louis Metro League of Women Voters, and I'll be your moderator. I want to thank the candidates for participating and the Limburg School District for sponsoring this forum. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization, and we believe that one of the best ways for voters to learn about people seeking election is to hear the candidates answer questions in a forum such as this. They have all been provided with the grand rules already, but I will run through them real quick for you. This is a forum. It's not a debate. It's the candidates' opportunity to tell you about their positions, not to take shots at each other. All the candidates will be given the opportunity to answer every question. And in order to allow them to be heard, I will ask you to please keep your applause until the end and keep any background conversations and comments to a minimum. I believe this is being recorded, so another reason to keep your background chat to yourselves. The candidates will have two minutes each for opening statements. Then they will have one minute to answer each question. And then at the end, two minutes again each for a closing statement. They are seated in the order that they appear on the ballot, and they will give their opening statements in that order. Then when we get to closing statements, I'll go in the reverse order, and the questions will rotate so that the same person isn't always having to go first. Our timer today is Angie, excuse me, also from the St. Louis Metro League. She will give the candidates a warning when they have 30 seconds left and then when their time is up. And if a candidate runs out of time, I will let them finish their sentence, and they've all promised to keep that last sentence short. The League of Women Voters and the Limburg School District provided a link on the websites for people to submit questions ahead of time. And boy, you really did. We had a lot of submissions. But if you didn't get your question in, we have volunteers from the League here. If you would wave with note cards. So if you think of a question halfway through, grab a card. And they will also come around and collect your cards if you hold them up when they're finished. But please, one question per card. So all the questions that we'll ask today have come from you and your fellow citizens. I have combined questions because, you know, we had close to 150 submissions. And of course, there's a lot of repetition. But I've combined the questions that are similar. I've tried to cover all the main areas of interest that had multiple questions, but we won't have time to get to every single one. But if you noticed when you were coming in, the candidates have campaign materials out in the hall. So if your question didn't get asked, you can find out from those materials how to contact the candidates and ask them directly. So let me introduce the candidates. This is the order that they will appear on the ballot on April 2nd. They are Rachel Brafkeeler, Megan Vedder, David Randleman, and Dr. David Kershner. So let's begin with opening statements. You have two minutes, and we'll start with you, Ms. Keeler.
First, I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for moderating. And second, I would like to thank the audience members for being here tonight. I have been a Limburg resident for 31 years. I am a proud graduate of Limburg High School, as well as a very proud parent of a recent graduate and an eighth grader at Truman. I've been a volunteer in the Limburg community for the past 14 years. My professional background includes earning my law degree from Washington University, serving as a judicial law clerk at the Missouri Supreme Court, and working in higher education for 13 years, specifically in career services at both Washington University undergrad and law school. Because of legal ethics rules, I want to add that my law license is currently in inactive status. I have been passionate about serving on the school board for a while, 10th grade, to be exact. While I did not know at that time all that was involved with being a member of the Board of Education, I did take note of the opportunity to serve a school district that meant so much and had given so much to me. I knew that it would take time for me to be ready to best serve the Limburg community. In preparation, I worked in numerous volunteer positions and leadership roles, including Girl Scout leader, PTO at Long and Truman, lead PTG, and with high school booster groups. I then moved up to district-level committees, including Teaching and Learning Board Advisory. I knew that in order to best serve this community and this school district, I needed to know how the school district worked, and I needed to get to know the people that make up the district: the students, families, teachers, staff, and administrators. Over the past couple of years, I have attended nearly every Board of Education meeting and board workshop. I met with current and former board members to learn about the role and responsibilities of a board member. I have also met with many administrators at Central Office numerous times to better understand the workings of the district. Most recently, I participated in training provided by the Missouri School Board Association and the nonprofit Education Plus. Because of my professional experience in higher education and my dedicated volunteer work within our district, I am confident that I am prepared and ready to take the next step and serve as a member of the Limburg Schools Board of Education. Thank you.
Ms. Vedder?
Good evening, everyone. I'd also like to thank the League for being here tonight to help moderate. And then I also want to thank my fellow candidates for being here. I know it takes a lot of courage and commitment to sit up here, so thanks for the willingness to serve our community. My name is Megan Vedder, and I'm honored to be running for reelection for the Limburg School Board. I am an advocate for public education and committed to the success of every student in our district. I'm a teacher, a parent, and the current secretary of the board. I live in Crestwood with my husband and two children, one of which is a second grader in the district, and the other will be entering kindergarten next year in the fall. I proudly carry the endorsements of the Limburg Teachers through LNEA and also the South County Labor Group. I believe that student success is and should always be Limburg's top priority. I want to support the district's dedication to creating an educational environment where every student has the opportunity to thrive academically, socially, and emotionally. Reliability and honesty are at the core of who I am as a person and who I am as a candidate. You can know that I will be transparent, accountable, and true to my word in all my actions and decisions. The board is good stewards of taxpayer dollars, so I'm committed to ensuring the district's resources are used wisely and effectively to benefit students and the community. I'm someone who values curiosity and continuous learning. I believe that education is a lifelong journey, so as a board member, I'm always willing to question what is happening and eager to explore new ideas and approaches to benefit our students and the community. I've had the privilege to serve the Limburg community as a school board member for the past three years, and I'm excited and hopeful for the opportunity to serve for a second term. I know that we can look towards the future and make sure that every student has the opportunity to succeed and thrive. Thank you so much for your support.
Before I start my statement, I have a question. How come we haven't had the Pledge of Allegiance? Because that's been the tradition in these forums. And I think being in a public position like this, I would like to see if we could have that.
That's not part of our usual way we do things. So if you wouldn't mind, if you'd ask me before we started, that might have been more appropriate. But right now, I would like to keep the meeting flowing, please.
All right. Well, I'd like to yield my time to do the pledge for those who'd like to join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for our world. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Dr. Kershner, opening statement?
Well, I still have a minute, I would think.
No, you yielded your time, sir. Dr. Kershner?
Okay, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. And already, there's a little friction here, which is a shame, right? Because in Limburg, we deserve more, right? Because we're very civil people. I found this race to be very hard to start with. This is my first time. And I appreciate the kindness that I've seen in people out of Limburg and the exchanges I've had, and I think it speaks well of our community. This is not how I meant to start, but I would like to address this because we have a good community. And I've talked to a lot of people in the last three months, and I appreciate that. There's a lot of energy, and I think sometimes it leads to some impoliteness and unkindness, and it's not necessarily beneficial to what we do. So I'll give you the second brief of why I'm running and what I'm doing. I believe strongly in public education. My wife and I moved here twice in the last 20 years because of the high quality of education. I grew up in a family of educators. My parents and grandparents were all elementary public school educators out of St. Joseph, Missouri. Parents taught for 50 years. I grew up listening to them talk about the problems they encountered over the dinner table. They instilled in my family, my siblings and me, a real love for education and the belief that it will change our lives. And so we studied hard. And out of the four siblings, my parents raised a lawyer, my oldest brother, a professor of medicine in Chicago, myself, I was a professor of geology at St. Louis University for 16 years, and my younger brother, who's a professor of chemistry in Germany. What that does is shows that education's a great equalizer because my father came out of extreme poverty during the 1930s. A single-parent home, very poor, had no food, but it raised us really well.
Thank you. All right, let's get to the questions. We'll start with Ms. Vedder. In what ways have you been involved in the Limburg community other than running for Board of Education? Do you have children in the district? Have you volunteered, sat on committees, communicated your concerns with the board or administration, et cetera?
Thank you. I'm, like I said earlier, a current board member. I served one three-year term. During that time, I've been on various committees, a lot of board advisory committees, like Teaching and Learning, Student Life, Technology, and Facilities. I am also the delegate for the Missouri State Board for Limburg. I also serve as the liaison for the Limburg Foundation Board. And then I've also just done various things at Crestwood Elementary with my daughter in her classroom and with the school. And hopefully, I can continue serving this community as well. Oh, and my daughter does go to Crestwood, and my son will be there in the fall.
Mr. Randle?
Yeah, thank you. So I've been in the district for 12 years, and we moved here from Israel. As far as kids in the district, I have an alumnus, 2022, and I've also been a part of committees here in the district. A lot of people have asked, why am I running again? Maybe not a lot, but some. And I think really that's to show my determination of how much I love the school district and I want to make a difference. So as far as involvement goes, two years I've been investing my time to talk to district members, to teachers, to district members. I've visited thousands of homes, and so I think I have a good perspective and a track record to show that I'm undeterred from making a difference. Thank you.
Dr. Kershner?
So I moved back to St. Louis in 2019 with my family, and then I retired, and my time is freed up this October. And at that point, I decided how I could contribute back to the community. And I decided to give it my experience as a research scientist for nine years at Shell Oil and 16 years as a professor. I had a contribution I could make to the education community. Now, it's multiple questions, and I should answer both at some point, but I only have answers for one right now. And my case resides with Dr. Lake. Why did the board hire Dr. Lake when they did? Because they deemed that he had the skills, the experience, the knowledge, and the wherewithal to lead the school district in the right direction. When you look for a board member, I think it's not necessarily the volunteerism and everything else that you engaged in, but it's what you have able to bring to the board that will help the district move forward. I think my educational background, my experience in industry for nine years, can help the board. Thank you.
Ms. Keeler?
Thank you. As I mentioned in my opening, I will add a few more volunteer activities also. And I have been grateful to have been able to be involved with the Girl Scouts in the Limburg community for 14 years now. I took my Girl Scout troop from kindergarten through senior year. We had six girls graduate, and two of them earned the Gold Award, which is the equivalent of Eagle Scout and Boy Scouts. I've been a classroom volunteer at Long. I've been on the PTO at Long and Truman. I was in charge of the scholarship for a couple of years, I believe, at Long. At Truman, I was co-treasurer. I was president and treasurer of the Strolling Strings Parent Group. I was involved as a theater parent at the high school. I've been on the Teaching and Learning Committee, the School Start Times Task Force. I'm currently serving on the Secondary Gifted Education Task Force. And also, the question about have I communicated my concerns to administrators in the district? Absolutely. If any of you have served on boards with me, whether you're parents or administrators, you know I like to ask a lot of questions. And I have had many visits with administrators here at Central Office as well. Thanks.
So for the next question, we'll start with Mr. Randleman. Some of you probably have neighbors that have children in private schools. What would you say to them to persuade them to send their children to Limburg schools instead?
Well, thank you for that question. I wouldn't try to convince them to do anything, really. I think that people who choose to send their children to private school versus the public school might have a very good reason. If it's learning disabilities, where not every problem can be met at the district, or maybe value or faith reasons, I don't think it's my place to try to convince anyone. But what I do want to do is make sure our district is as accommodating and as inclusive as possible so that we can actually have the majority of our district residents participate in the public school.
So I'm that neighbor. I have two children, a freshman and sophomore, and they do not go to the Limburg schools. Okay? Why? Because we moved back in 2019. My kids were just in the middle school. They lost all of their friends from Texas, where they grew up with those kids. We moved four times the first year we were in St. Louis, and it took us that long to find the home we wanted in the district. So we own two homes in the district now. But we moved in the week that COVID shut us down, March 2020. You imagine middle school kids with no opportunity to make friends. And then when we toured the high school and it was during the renovations, we realized it was a bridge too far for my family. We were not going to ask my kids to upend their social life and make new friends a third time. So we sent them to Lutheran South, where they do have friends going. They're freshmen, sophomore, and they're doing well. So I think, I hope you can respect that. I've heard a lot of people say I'm disqualified for running, but I don't think so.
Ms. Keeler?
The question, I think, was what would I say to persuade neighbors who send their children to schools other than Limburg, to send their children to Limburg? And I would not persuade anyone to make a choice other than what they've made is right for their family. My goddaughter, actually, my husband and I, we have a goddaughter who lives in our district, and they go to private school, and it's for religious reasons. And I think that's a wonderful reason for their family. They made that decision. I think what I would say is to people who are looking to move into the St. Louis area, I would strongly encourage you, if you're considering public schools, to persuade you to move into Limburg. Many reasons. As you can hear from the volunteerism that I've had with the district, we do have a very involved community. I've not done those things alone. We have passionate educators. We have excellent academics, extracurricular activities, sports, facilities. For any of you who were able to tour our high school at an open house a couple of weeks ago, we just have a lot of resources at our hands. Thank you.
Sorry. I also don't like the word persuade, but I know that there's lots of different reasons. But if there's anyone that wanted to just hear information about Limburg, then I'd be happy to give that. I think that just being on the board and then also being in the community, I know that we have top-rated and highest-quality teachers. Our community is fantastic. Our schools always come together and support each other, and the kids have so much opportunity within the schools as well. We are top-ranked. We are still considered a destination district, so hopefully, people are still looking at that to come here so that their kids can get a quality education, as well as just a place where they feel like they belong, and a place that they feel like that they want to be in. And I think Limburg does provide that for everyone.
Next question, Dr. Kershner, will be you first. I'm sure you've all listed your endorsements on your campaign materials, but please state for us here your key endorsements from individuals, groups, PACs. If you've turned down any endorsements, please explain why you did, sir.
That's easy. I have zero endorsements. I asked and did not seek for any endorsement. And the reason is, I find when I was looking at questionnaires and stuff, they were very myopic. They were one-issue endorsements. I did break my rule once, and I regretted it because I went to the trade union to speak and seek their endorsement after I kind of set that for myself and told other groups. I did that because I really believe in the trades. It's a path my son might follow. We've talked about because it's a noble trade or a noble way. They asked two questions of me. Do you support Prop R with the implication that we want the business? Second question, do you support collective bargaining? Those were the only two questions they asked in eight minutes, and they gave their endorsement based on that. So I am glad. I'd asked not to be considered by the teachers' union because I did not want that endorsement. I'm much broader than just a single-issue endorsement, and so I got zero.
Ms. Keeler?
I am proudly endorsed by the Limburg NEA, the Limburg Teachers Union. I am also endorsed by the mayor of Sunset Hills, Pat Freibis, by the former mayor of Crestwood, Grant Mayby. He's a current alderman in Crestwood. I am also endorsed by Missouri Senator Doug Beck, by the South County Labor Organization, and also by Moeep. I am very proud to be endorsed by all of those organizations. And I want to say, first of all, for the teachers, they are an integral part of schools. We need to take care of the people that take care of our students. So it is very important to me that I have their support, and I'm thankful for that. They also had an extremely thorough questionnaire, and I was grateful for all of those questions that they asked. The South County Labor Organization had an opportunity to tell them about my candidacy, and I did not feel that there was any implication that I had to say one thing one way or another other than I do support collective bargaining. That's part of being in a labor union. Thank you.
Ms. Vedder?
I'm also supported by Limburg Teachers through the LNEA, the South County Labor Union as well. I have an endorsement from Moeep and as well as Grant Mayby, who is the current alderman in Crestwood.
Yes, so I also filled out the survey for the NEA, but I specifically asked not to be considered for endorsement. The reason was, I really wanted to convey and hopefully get to teachers and stakeholders my heart, really, for the teachers, my willingness to work with them. But I do think that the NEA having a presence on the board is an interest group, and it's a conflict of interests. And I think we've seen that in the last, really, seven years. I am endorsed by two former board members, Kara Horton and Dr. Tischlis. And yeah, that's it.
Thank you. Next question, we'll go to Ms. Keeler first. And I will say, this question was far and away the most frequently submitted question. Do you support Prop R? Why or why not?
Yes, I do support Prop R. And I'm not sure if it'll be asked later, but I also supported Prop R in 2019. That was the prop that allowed us to rebuild our crumbling high school and provide such needed improvements in safety with the secure vestibules at all of our schools. And those are the same reasons why I support the current Prop R. It will be touching every building in our school district. It will give the same security enhancements that we've been able to provide at the high school to the other buildings as well. My children have attended Truman Middle School, and Sparing Mill School will also get some work done as well. However, for any of you that haven't been in Truman, I encourage you to reach out and take a tour if you can. It is not a building that I would want to spend any money as a board member replacing a roof. The building itself needs significant improvements. And I am also excited about the opportunity to have separate cafeterias and gymnasiums for all of our elementaries in the school district.
Thank you. Ms. Vedder?
I also support Prop R. I think that it feels like a no-brainer for our community, especially considering that it's a no-tax rate increase. Our current debt ceiling is set to be hit in 2040, and adding this additional bond would only extend that by five years. So your property taxes may go up, but the taxes that you're paying towards Limburg will not increase until that time. So it feels like a great opportunity for us to do some really great improvements to our buildings, especially with safety and security, making sure that there's equity in the building so that all students have access to the same types of learning spaces to enhance their learning. Also, the idea of being able to have this incredibly new agricultural tech STEM center through the Concord Farmers Club is really, really exciting. And it's something that all of our students, K through 12, will be able to experience, and it will be something pretty unlike anything else that is around. And so I'm really excited for that opportunity as well. Yep, one time, sorry.
Randle?
Yeah, so my answer is yes and no. I have toured the facilities and with my own eyes, I've seen where we do need improvements. I would have liked to see a more sensible and very specific Prop R to deal with those issues because I think they need to be dealt with. We have instead lumped a big number that's going to put a huge debt load on this district. They call it a no-raised tax, but it's assuming that 2% to 3% rise in our assessments on our homes is going to go up year after year, so our taxes will follow that. And I would say that we don't want to tax people out of the district. We've seen, I've spoken to many retired individuals who feel that it's a big strain, and they finance 80% of our district. So I would have rather seen, all right, thank you.
I do not support Tax R in its present form. I've seen Truman, and I've seen a few of the other schools, and I appreciate the tour that we were given. But I think if I was on the board, I would have split them into two separate props. The first one, I would have done with all the needed items that need to be fixed right now, like the security doors. I think that's critical, that we need to protect our students. We need to protect the roof of Truman so we don't get water damage inside. We have certain needs, but those might have been covered with a much cheaper prop. I know it can. The other things that would be good for the district, I would have put off until the financial picture of the district clears out after the pandemic. We're still in a phase of transition, and mortgage rates are high. People are not moving. We don't know how property appraisals go and go. And so I've seen the amortization schedule, and we're going to pay $490 million in 20 years on the principal and interest. $490 million.
So Ms. Vedder, for you first. If Prop R does not pass, how would you propose to support facility upgrades?
Well, if the prop does not pass, I think first it's important to know that it won't change anything. Our buildings will continue to fail. The district will be forced to put Band-Aids on things, and the conditions will just get The other hard thing is that you're going to have to start taking money from operations, which are used to do things like pay teachers and pay for new curriculum for students. And you'll have to start using those funds to fix buildings. And so using prop money and bond money is a much more reasonable way to make those capital improvements because the money is there to use just for the buildings and just for creating the space for students and teachers to come. And so it would be a very different financial burden on the school if the prop does not pass in order to maintain the building. pass in order to maintain the buildings.
I'll just note that we are already paying from our operational expenses to service our current debt for the 2019 Prop R, about $40,000 a day, about 20% of our operational expenditure. So having another prop is only going to continue and burden that. But I would say this, if it doesn't pass and I get on the board, I will be in favor of another prop, which will address exactly the issues that we know are needed. We do not want to neglect them at all. We just are hesitant about the Agriculture Center and other facilities, which are nice to have, of being added on and tacked on to this prop.
So I would come back with the second prop immediately that would address all the needs, and it would be much smaller, but would solve all the much-needed problems right away. I would wait a couple of years to get clarity on the real estate market in the district on student enrollment numbers as we go forward before I make another prop come forward. I've talked with seniors. Do you know what the population in our district that is the poorest? It's the seniors. 5% of the seniors in this district are in the poverty level. And I've talked to them, and I've seen a lot of anger from these citizens who have paid taxes for years, but they're being taxed out of their homes. And if property taxes keep going up, they're going to be leaving, and I don't think that's fair either. So people have been very generous. My wife and I, we've been generous too. We paid over $50,000 in taxes to this district. And I think people will continue to be generous as long as there's transparency on where the money's going.
Mr. Randleman, you're first. Oh, I missed you. I'm so sorry.
Thank you. If Prop R does not pass, we, well, because the only way that school districts in the state of Missouri are able to make significant capital improvements is through bond issues, we are not permitted to use operating expenses for that, except in special circumstances that I'll explain if I have a chance. We would have to pass another prop in order to make any capital improvements to the buildings in our district. There is of the current prop, it's either $20 or $30 million. I could get to the exact number. I don't have it right in front of me. But that is from the previous prop and is currently in our operating expenses because when the high school was being constructed, we had been told that we were going to be under a certain code, year of code, and didn't need to have a second storm shelter. And that unfortunately changed because of changes with the pandemic. So we have board policy that allowed the board to make the decision that we needed to do these improvements to meet code. It was outside the scope of the initial work, and as a result, that debt is going to be moved to the new prop.
Now, Mr. Randleman. Sorry about that. How will you address hiring and retaining quality teachers from diverse backgrounds?
Well, it's very simple. I would go for the teacher that has the most merit for the job. I'm not looking to create diversity. I'm looking to create the best opportunity. I believe in equality. And I think we need to remove the whole idea of if we have this many children with this in the skin tone, then we need to have this many teachers to represent that. I think we need to look past skin color. And so I believe in equality, and that's it.
I was involved in hiring about 17, 18 faculty, a slew. And I was very pleased in those discussions that we never brought up the gender or the race of the candidates. And I can tell you that we offered jobs more often, or maybe not, but about the same as to women as to men because they were the best candidates, no doubt about it. It was a matter of merit in our department when we're looking to hire different people. And that's the same process I would follow in Lindbergh, that we'd look at merit to look for the best teachers. I worked in Shell Oil for nine years. It's an international company, and I worked with a cadre of about 100 PhD research scientists. We came from all over the world. We were of different genders, and there was never a question of, I would need to be on a team with a Chinese man or an Egyptian woman. That was never part of the discussion. We want to be on the team that had the best skills to solve the problem. And so that was never the issue of discussion at Shell.
Thank you. I also agree we should hire the most qualified teachers who have met the requirements for those positions. I also believe in having diversity in our school district. Diversity creates a bridge or connection to students who do not see themselves or hear their stories being told. I know myself that when I was in fifth grade and at Kennelley Elementary, was invited to vote in the mock election. This is giving my age away. It was Walter Mondale and Geraldine Ferraro. And I was pretty excited that Geraldine Ferraro was the first, I believe, the first female vice president on a ticket. I thought, wow, it really is a possibility. But I have to say that I did not feel it in here, that it really was a possibility, until I saw Vice President Harris inaugurated. That is when I felt that it was a possibility. So yes, I feel it is important that we hire teachers that meet the qualifications, but we need to work hard to be at events where we can recruit diverse candidates as well.
I really lean into listening to the community on this one. I think our students, our teachers, our community have said that they want to have the highest-quality teachers, and they want to have teachers that are representative of our community as a whole. And it feels hard to think about these students that come from marginalized groups and that are underrepresented. Having somebody tell them that it doesn't matter if they have a teacher that looks like them, or it doesn't matter if they have a teacher that lives a similar life or had similar experiences. I can't imagine looking at a student and telling them that that's not important, because it is. And having those high-quality teachers, really, finding the diverse teachers is really about recruitment, and how can we get out there and look at best practices and look at different job fairs and looking at what is going around in the entire metro area and really broadening the scope of how can we find teachers.
Dr. Koshner, for you first. How do you plan to work with teachers and keep that relationship positive?
I've done that most of my life. I live with teachers, and I worked at the university with teachers. I think, I did not ask to be supported by the union, but that doesn't mean that I don't value teachers. I think teachers are undervalued in our culture. We glorify sports, we glorify TikTok social movers, but we don't glorify the educators. And so do you know how many Nobel winners we have in Missouri? I think there's only one, only one. That's a shame, right? We need to glorify education, and we need to get the best teachers in the position because what's the biggest impact on students? It's a highly passionate, effective teacher that is more effective than any curriculum or any building or anything else that you have. And so teachers will find that I am very supportive of.
I look forward to working with the teachers. I'm already enjoying working with the teachers, and I'm grateful for their endorsement. I plan to continue an open line of communication. I am looking forward to learning more about how the district already has, or what the district has in place for communication opportunities for teachers with administrators and with the board. I also would like teachers to, in order to keep a positive relationship, I'm going to make sure that we're paying them what they deserve, what they should be earning. We need to keep in line as much as possible with our benchmark districts. We're never going to pay the most, but we also should never pay the least. I was grateful that last year, the school district HR department worked on the extra pay, extra-duty extra-pay project, which looked at the teachers who were providing additional services for activities after school, sports coaching, et cetera. And it made sure that those payment scales were more in line with each other to ensure fairness.
I really think that the foundation of the success here in Lindbergh lies in the teachers and lies in the strengths of relationships that administration, teachers, students, and the community have built together. I really think that there is a shared commitment throughout the community to be listeners, to be learners, and to really ask questions. There is a genuine curiosity out there, and I think that this is a part of the relationship. Also, just trusting teachers. A lot of it is just trusting that they are professionals, and they are trained to do this job, and they are trained to do it well. And they do. They do it very well. And we have great administration that allows teachers to use their creativity and to use their education and knowledge to do what is best for kids. And I can't think of a single teacher out there that sits in their classroom and says, nah, I don't want to do that. I don't want to do what's best for kids. Because they all do. And Lindbergh is very grateful for that.
I'm going to actually leverage the opportunity to repeat the question. Was it just about the, if you don't mind?
How do you plan to work with teachers and keep that relationship positive?
All right, thank you. Yes, so I've spoken to a lot of teachers in our district, and many of them do support me. And not all of them are part of the union, but I will say that a lot of them have confided and shared that sometimes they feel pressured because of that. A lot of conservative teachers don't feel comfortable sharing who they are, and I think that's a shame. But what I'd like to promote is a line of communication between the teachers and the administration and even the board. So when problems arise, there's a line of communication where we can act on and respond more effectively. I think it's also important to have more feedback from teachers, especially about whether our curriculum or program is working or not, and problems in the classroom. So I'd like to see more involvement from the administration and board on supporting our teachers and backing them up.
Ms. Keela, you get to go first. What, if any, equity issues do you see in our district? How would you, as a school board member, work to support all students' needs and ensure an equitable environment for students and staff?
I'm going to do my best in answering this question to address two specific areas, equity in facilities, and then also equity in teaching and resources and education. First, I think that is one of the main reasons I support Prop R, is it is going to ensure equity with especially all of our elementary students, that it doesn't matter which building you attend, everyone pays the same tax rate, but not all elementary students have the same opportunity to have the same experiences. And that's true for middle school students as well. So equity in facilities, for sure. And then, secondly, equity with resources. So I believe that, similarly, okay, if a teacher, perhaps, let's say, because of a teacher having been involved and maybe done more professional learning in one area is an expert in that in one building, I would like to make sure that the district offers opportunities for teachers in all buildings to develop that same level of expertise so that, again, it doesn't depend which building you attend, oh, if you're in this grade at this school, you're going to have the best instruction in this subject. Thank you.
I'm also looking at equity in our buildings, and I think that, like I said earlier, that's such an important part of the prop that is being proposed. I think that all students should, and teachers and all staff should have access to the same things, whether that be a separate gym and cafeteria, whether that is safety enhancements on the buildings. Also, our community deserves to have a little better traffic flow. I don't know if any of you have been out there on Savington Road or Concord School Road, when it gets backed up during pickup hours and drop-off hours. This equity and just safety is a big piece of it. I also think that kind of my vision of equity in the district when it comes to people is just really rooted in creating an environment where every individual feels valued, they feel supported, and empowered to succeed. And I think the district has done a good job with the hiring of a director for inclusion, equity, and diversity to really look at who has a seat at the table, what is happening in the district, and how can we best serve our community.
I think it would have been nice if equity had a more clear definition, but I think my primary concern is how we've implemented equity in order to sort of flatten the bell curve, if you will, of outcome. And I want to give an example. So, for example, we've implemented this approach about homework. And homework is been recognized as something that students with troubled homes may not be able to accomplish. And therefore, we've made homework not mandatory for students. And so what does a typical student do when they don't have to do homework? Well, many of them won't do homework. And I think that's sort of lowered the rigor in our academic performance in general. So the way we're implementing some of our equity, I would say, philosophy and ideology, I don't think is working for us.
So I'll address it a little bit more broadly. I totally agree that diversity and inclusion is important. I think every child should come to school excited, have their people group, never be bullied, and feel at home. That's, I believe. Equity is an issue that I think is difficult in the implementation. You know, 2020, we went through the pandemic and a social unrest, a black light movement, and George Floyd, all these tragedies. And in a knee-jerk reaction, we want things really changed, and like with defunding police and other things, maybe actions are being taken that in a year, couple of years are going to be reflected on saying, maybe this wasn't wisest. I think equity has been implemented in our classrooms or in our district is maybe not the wisest sometimes. For example, why do we spend $490 million in facilities and not help kids who need support at home to get back and forth to school at night, to get tutoring after school? Why don't we do that? That would create equity.
Some candidates have expressed as part of their campaign points that parental rights should be part of Lindbergh's schools. Please define what parental rights means to you, and how do you ensure that one parent's rights aren't infringing on other parents who may have a different stance than you?
I think that there are a lot of different definitions for parental rights. I think my definition of it is a parent's right to be included in their child's education and to make decisions that is important to their particular family and their individual or many children that they have. I don't see how, I don't see how this isn't happening at Lindbergh. And I have seen parents advocate for their kids. I've seen, I'm not saying it's perfect. There have definitely been people who have had problems. But if there's one thing I know from being on the board for the past three years, that I have seen our principals, our teachers, our administration work very hard to ensure that all students are cared for and that all students are learning. And I think that that's something that all parents can be proud of.
So parental rights really isn't anything new. It's how it exists currently under the law. Parents or guardians are the primary caregiver of their children, full stop. I think in my campaign at least, and I think we saw this during my run last year, there was a lot of controversy over the idea that conversations can be had with students about their identity, sexual orientation, or gender, and hide it from the parents. And my platform opposes that idea. Parents should always be involved, except if it's a social issue that needs to be addressed with a social worker. Parents are the primary caregivers. So that's what it means to me.
When I send my children to school, I don't check my rights at the door. I'm the one who cares the most about my children, and I want to be involved in everything. I don't want anything to be hidden. Even if they take an aspirin, we need to be called for them to take an aspirin. That's the way I think it should be. Now, how does that impede other parents' rights? I don't think it does, right? The school is a place of education, not of socialization. I'm not bringing the values of my family, my children, in to the schools they go to. We teach our values at home, and I don't expect the school to reinforce them. But at the same time, I don't expect other parents to bring their values in and expect my child or other people reinforce them. The school's for the education, and it doesn't infringe upon anybody's rights as a parent.
I agree. My husband and I are the primary caregivers for our children, and we send our children to school so that they can be... to school so that they can be received in education and be exposed to opportunities from being with their peers and other activities that we couldn't offer to them at home. I believe also that parental rights are part of the Lindbergh School District. They are taken into consideration. It is, I would be horrified if I heard that there was ever a situation when someone was approached, whether it be a staff member, an administrator, a counselor, and they encouraged a student to hide something from their parents. I, as a board member, would want to know what are the details of that situation. I also feel that it's important for students to have trusting relationships with their educators, and I would wish that the educators would encourage the students to share these types of things with their family members if they felt safe to do so.
Mr. Randleman, this will be you first. What is your position on students who identify as something other than the gender on their birth certificate? Do you support pronoun and name changes?
Yeah, so I've said oftentimes on my campaign that I believe the values are for the family and the education for the school. I think that if a family brings their child in and expresses to the school district, my child is dealing with a certain identity crisis or gender dysphoria, that the school needs to accommodate and try to work with that family as much as possible. But there are limitations to what we can do. For example, I would not be in favor of a child, a biological male, for example, going into girl bathrooms or attending girls' sports. So this is about protecting also the safe spaces of other individuals. So I think we have to be pragmatic and recognize that there are different students with different backgrounds, but I would, that would be my approach to it.
Dr. Koshner?
I think parents need to be involved unless they agree that it would be helpful for their child to be addressed in a certain way. I think out of courtesy and kindness, teachers would be asked to respond. I don't think I would ever force a teacher to respond in a certain way, but out of kindness, I think many would. I definitely agree. I have a daughter, and I don't want her to be in a situation where she feels uncomfortable in a bathroom situation, and I think there's compromises. One of the big things that we need to rediscover in our society is the art of compromise. There's ways of meeting the needs of most people, most of the time, through compromise. And I think that's something that we've lost as, in our country, but maybe even in our district, where there's a lot of pushing back and forth that maybe seems as polar opposites, but maybe there's really a place of compromise.
Would you repeat the question, please? Or highlights?
Bear with me, because I put the question down at the bottom of the stack.
Sorry.
So I've got to dig it out again. What is your position on students who identify as something other than the gender on their birth certificate? Do you support pronoun and name changes?
My position on students who identify as something other than on their birth certificate is what the family, the student and the family have decided. Do I support pronoun and name changes? Similarly, if the student and if the family together has decided that, I support that as well. Also, I support that if a student is approaching a teacher or a staff member and wanting to have a discussion about their gender identity, I would hate for it to be the situation where the teacher would have to say, pause, I can't talk to you, I need to call your parent and make sure if it's okay to talk to you about this. I would like to believe that all children come from a home like my children do, where my children can approach my husband and I about these kinds of things, but I can't have a guarantee on that. So I guess that's where I stand with that. In terms of the bathrooms, I think we have a great compromise, especially in our new facilities, where the bathrooms have stalls that are floor-to-ceiling and sinks out in the open, so it doesn't matter what gender you are when you're using those facilities. Everyone is comfortable.
Ms. Veda?
I truly believe in listening to and believing the experiences of students and of people as a whole, and so I do support pronoun and name changes.
So, Dr. Koshner, it's you first. The reality of our world is that you will not make everyone happy. Our district is very divided with what we believe the students should learn. Please share the one most important thing that you believe children should learn.
I hate these one questions, because there's so much that children need to learn. So I don't know how I would answer that. I will give a list. I think they need to be people of integrity and honesty. They need to treat others with respect like they want to be treated. I think they should learn to love others as they would want to be loved. I think they should learn to seek wisdom and truth. I mean, being educated is a glorious thing. It expands our life. I hope they learn to be hard workers and not be ones who take but who give. I could keep going on, because I think there's commonality among all of us, the traits that we want our children to have, and that's what I would teach in school.
Ms. Keela?
So I'm going to try and compromise, and I'm going to give two things instead of just one. I believe, well, the public school system was created back to prepare workers for factories, right, and when industrialization was beginning. And so at that time, we had to teach specific skills to students. This is part of my first answer, I assure you. So the first thing we need to teach is we need to teach people those skills and how to find out what those skills are, so knowledge about those skills. In today's world, because it's so easy to find knowledge and, you know, at our phones, computers, it's not enough to teach how to find it. Now we need to teach how to use it and how to use it when we are out in this ever-changing world and working in communities. So I think we need to teach students information, we need to give them knowledge, and then we need to teach them how to use it.
I agree. I also have a hard time with these one-answer questions. But I think when it comes to Lindbergh, the one thing that I want students to learn is that they are individuals and that since Lindbergh allows students for individualized learning, that they can take what they need and they can take what the education they get and the friends that they have and the experiences they have, and they can really take that and think about, well, what does that mean for me? And what does that mean for me as an adult out in the world? We really want to make sure that our students are able to have a life beyond Lindbergh, and how can Lindbergh help prepare them for that? And so it's something that I, the one thing that I would want them to learn is just some agency in figuring out what that life looks like for them.
Mr. Randleman?
Well, I wonder if there really is such a big gap in division between, in our community, as that question seems to suggest. I think we all want to see a well-rounded education, really something that produces independent thinkers. So, for example, if we look at history, I would want a full, complete history, but not through a lens or narrative. I would want just the full, complete history. And why do I say this? Well, my children, for example, they experience antisemitism in this very school, and it's not the fault of the staff or anything like that, but I do put some emphasis on the curriculum. It wasn't complete portraying Israel's situation, and as a result, almost all the students took a side of the Palestinian conflict against Israelis, and my daughter, being Israeli, felt rejected and didn't belong. This would have been solved if we would have properly taught history. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Keela? Do you think we are still behind academically since the pandemic? And how do you propose we get back on track, if you do?
The first part of the question, do I think we are still behind academically?
After the pandemic.
Or after the pandemic, okay. So it does not specify academics. I will try and work that in. I think that our whole world is recovering from the pandemic still. I read today in an article, and I don't remember the reason why, but today is, I guess, the four-year anniversary. I personally almost shudder still thinking about that, and then also, at the same time, can't believe it even happened. So yes, I think we are all still recovering. We're working to get kids, actually, I'm going to leave it at that, we are still recovering. What I want to say in terms of being behind our students, we are very lucky that the board implemented the policies that they did during the pandemic for our students to have various ways to continue their learning and opportunities that suited each family. I know that with the assessment that the school district is using now to measure both achievement and growth, NWEA, our students currently rank in ELA at the 77th percentile for proficient or above, and for math, it's at the 74th percentile based on norms that were set prior to the pandemic in 2020.
I also think that everyone in the world is still trying to play catch-up from the pandemic. I do think that our students have showed a lot of grit and a lot of ability to continue to succeed even through hard times. I think that we have, that Lindbergh has done a good job at looking at different curriculums to make sure that they are suiting the needs of what students need for their education and what the school needs to have a well-rounded, research-backed curriculum for all kids to learn from. I also think that we can continue to think about that it's not this idea of perfection in academics, but it's an idea of progress, and we want our students to continue to make those incremental gains and to think about progress over perfection and think about how they can continue to succeed in many different ways and show that they can learn and show that they can grow, and what that looks like for students can look very differently and giving them the opportunity to do so.
Yes, so I agree that we are still recovering, but we're not recovering fast enough. If we look at neighboring districts, benchmark districts like Kirkwood and Ladue, they're recovering faster. Now, I was pleased to see that the last year, we have been starting to make a faster recovery, but it's not fast enough. According to MSUP 6, the program we all like to use to talk about our district performance, ELA, we still have 43% of our students that are below class proficiency, 44 in math, and 45% of our students are not proficient in science. So I would like to see better improvement, and, yeah, that's pretty much it.
All right, Dr. Koshner?
I would, excuse me, I'm sorry. I would encourage you to go to kerschnerforlindbergh.com, because I have put up documents that helped me to understand the current, the former and current situation of Lindbergh in terms of the MAPS score. And the MAPS score is a Missouri assessment that's been done for about 25 years. Some might say the standards are antiquated, but the standards of reading and writing, the math, are pretty universal over space and time. I would suggest you go there. We have taken a big hit by COVID, but we were actually in decline in achievement on those tests before. Tests are just one metric, but it's an important metric because there's four groups that use assessment, and two of them are the citizens of this community that pay the taxes and then the recipients of the graduates, the universities, the employers, and so on, and the tests have to be accurate.
Ms. Veda, you'll be first this time. Missouri state legislators have been showing increased hostility towards public schools and teachers, some examples being the cease and desist letter from AG Bailey regarding its LEAP program and the introduction of anti-trans legislation. Do you support such measures, and how do you plan to support our teachers and students regarding these type of issues?
Can you say that again, please?
It was a long one. Missouri state legislators have been showing increased hostility towards public schools and teachers, some examples being the cease and desist letter from AG Bailey regarding its LEAP program, the introduction of anti-trans legislation. Do you support such measures, and how do you plan to support our teachers and students regarding these types of issues?
Thank you. I'm definitely a supporter of public schools. I agree that there is a lot of legislation out there that is concerning when it comes to supporting public schools, whether it be funding, whether it be information that is frankly just disappointing to hear. I would agree with Lindbergh in saying that the letter from the Attorney General was disappointing, and it's been very clear that what the Attorney General is saying is happening is not happening. This information was vetted through district lawyers and administration to show that the practices are good and that they're best for kids and that there is no discrimination. And I really wish that our legislators could take more time to talk to the schools and really figure out what's going on instead of just making assumptions or making stories that may or may not be true. I just wish they would do more communicating.
So I think that question in general is kind of loaded. I really don't think that we should talk about legislators in that fashion, but rather look at the contents of what they're actually saying and assess it based on that. A lot of the legislation, in my opinion, is driven, right or wrong, by concern in our schools and in the community, reaching out to the legislator and expressing their frustration, if it's with ideologies in the school district and kind of steering away from what used to be our golden standard in education to affirmative action practices, which I believe are happening in our school district. But I would hope to have cooperation with the legislators and make sure our school district is following the law.
I think we've fallen into a situation in our country where the winner takes all the marbles home, and I don't think that's beneficial. The legislations coming out is like either-or, we do this or we do that, but there is room for compromise that should be sought, because the school district needs to meet the needs of the majority of the citizens and their students. And so the way to hedge off the push for charter vouchers, ESA, is to provide a school system that meets the needs of the majority of the citizens, right? The reason these things are getting traction in our state government is because there's disrest. It's starting to divide our citizens into two populations, and hopefully, we can arrest that and turn it around and become one community again.
Do I support the measures and how will I support the teachers and students in this process? I want to say that I feel it is a responsibility of the school district to do its very, very best to meet the needs of all students and all community members. As has already been said tonight, life, really, I believe life is progress, not perfection. We are not ever going to be able to reach perfection, but we need to strive to get there. We need to be willing to listen, to lean into the difficult conversations, see where we can find compromise, as has been discussed. I'd like to speak specifically to the letter that was sent by the Attorney General. As I said, I don't have a current license that is in active status to practice, however, I do have a legal education, and I did graduate from Washington University Law School. And one of the things we learned there is that it's very important to do your research. I was very disappointed that a letter was sent saying that was so, to me, I read it as accusatory, and especially once I found out that the due diligence was not necessarily done by the Attorney General's office before sending such a letter. Thank you.
Mr. Randleman, you go first on this one. This is a question from a parent. As a parent, I very much appreciate Lindbergh's goal of teaching to the whole student. How would you support social and emotional learning in our schools as well as academic learning and critical thinking?
So I don't know necessarily what is meant when it means teaching to the whole student. I think we need to teach academics and meet the student. I think we need to teach academics and meet the needs of the student in order to lift them up towards that academic standard. For example, when I hear that we've stopped with some of our math intervention programs and we don't have a good framework to help students that are starting to fall behind, to me, that's not teaching to the student, to the full student. So I would like to see improvement in that area. Yeah, that's really all I have.
Dr. Goshen.
This is a subject matter that I haven't educated myself on yet. I've really put effort in over the last three, four months to really come up to speed on this. And so I can't speak informed on this matter. But I would say, I do think that the family is the main source of social and emotional wellbeing. A stable family is the one who provides that. And I personally would never look to the school to provide that resource or that to my child. Would I want them to work against it and have them traumatized? No, of course not. I wouldn't want any child traumatized or feel bad about going to school. But is the school supposed to meet all the needs of all of our society? You know, we're having them feed people now. We have them take care of their health, and now we're asking them to take their, the social, emotional needs. Where's the academics? It might simplify things by cutting down the burden we put on the public schools.
Social and emotional learning is not independent from academic learning. They are hand in hand. We are not, in order for a student to, I believe, in order for a student to be able to pay attention in math class, we need to make sure that they feel seen, heard, valued, respected. Otherwise, it's going to be incredibly, I know it would be for me. It would be incredibly difficult for me to learn in that type of an environment. So that is how I interpret teaching to the whole student. Also, I am thrilled about one of the components or the benefits of the NWEA that the school district is using is that it is both an assessment in terms of what does the student know at this point in time, but it is given three times a year so that the teacher can look at specific skills and see where is there improvement that is needed, where is growth needed, or where has growth happened that we can celebrate. And that allows especially for students with math challenges to see specifically what are the types of things that they're struggling with in the math unit, instead of going to a class where they would potentially be taught in a group setting.
Svetor.
I think this speaks really well to the Lindbergh Life Success Skills that Lindbergh has. It is a great way to combine the social, emotional learning as well as the academics in a really holistic way. It's really thinking about, again, that life beyond Lindbergh and really focusing in on the four Cs, which are critical thinking, creativity, collaboration, and communication. Thank you. And communication. And so, again, like Mrs. Keeler said, this is all integrated together. And I think it's really great to think about how the community responds is in the most recent Listening and Learning Tour, that Lindbergh Life Success Skills, whether it was a teacher, a student, a community member, a parent, that these Lindbergh Life Success Skills were always top-rated on what people in this community find important.
All right. We have time for one more question, then we'll go to closing statements. But before I ask that last question, we did have many questions submitted about why are you the best candidate? Why do you think we should vote for you? What qualities do you bring? That kind of thing. So I will ask you, rather than ask that as the last question, please, you can address it in your closing statements. So, Mr. Randallman, it's for you first. Do you believe that children have a right to choose what to read separately from parental approval?
Sure. I think as long as the category is educational and categorically within what's been assigned to the class, doesn't contain material which the parents have asked not to include in their children's reading, I think that's fine. So, for example, I would not want my children to have sexually explicit images or depictions of acts at a very young age, right? So I don't know if that's your question, but...
It's not my question.
No, but I mean, if that's the question, I should say. But I would encourage a child to be able to explore books and read different things within the library. But I'd like the library to be a safe space, the way it used to be just a few years ago.
That's an interesting question because I would have never phrased it as a right. I see parents as mentoring, raising, lifting them up as they grow. They are not able to make good decisions throughout that process, and parents are the ones who make the good decisions for. I think this is more being asked about the libraries in the school system. What I see it as is a resource allocation issue. The library resources should be those that are given toward education, and it should be somewhat aligned with what's being taught in the classes. Students and parents, parents and students have access to Amazon. I bought some of the books that were being discussed last year. They came to me in five days, and I looked them over, and I didn't read them. I would decide not to read them. I found them not appropriate even for my children, and I want to show some of the books that were being discussed. But they're available, and they're also in the public schools, in the public libraries. We have three of them right here. So I got to run out of time.
Parents have a right to tell the school what they wish for their children to read and not. And there is a way to do that through submitting forms to the librarians. If you have a specific category that you wish that your child would not be permitted to check out, that is something that is available to parents. And I think that is very important because I know not all students at the same age level are on the same reading level or social or emotional maturity level. Also, our school district has a library media review policy. And as part of that, it has a committee that if a group or if a parent is concerned about a book that has been already vetted by our librarians that have had extensive education in this field, have followed industry guidelines, DESI requirements, all of the rules and regulations that the state puts forth about what we are allowed to have in our libraries. If you feel that it is not meeting those, you can fill out that form, and then there is a committee that will decide it and ultimately have the board make the decision.
Svetor.
I love books, and I know a lot of our kids love books and families love books. And I think that kids do, I agree. I don't know if the right to read sits well, but I think that having availability for kids to read is important. And I know that parents are having conversations with their kids about what they can or cannot read. And if there are any issues, then those can absolutely be addressed with the schools. No child is reading something that they can't read based on what a parent says. And my hope is that the, that with having availability to as many books as possible with different experiences and different people, that our kids will continue to have a love for reading and to enjoy it and for it to be just a part of their everyday life. And that's what I would hope that it would give.
All right. Let's move to closing statements. Just as a reminder, you have two minutes each, and we're going to come back along the line this time. So we'll start with you, Dr. Goshen.
Can you repeat the little part you wanted us to address also?
Oh, just, there were a lot of questions about why are you the best candidate? What qualities do you bring? The kind of personal side of things.
There goes my memorized closing.
It's up to you if you want to incorporate, but...
But the question is, what would be the characteristics of an effective board member? In my opinion, an effective board member brings skills, experience, education, knowledge that will complement the other board members, that will help the district manage its affairs, its curriculum, its financial, its human resources effectively. My background, I've told you, has been in academics most of my life. I was PhD at University of Minnesota, four years of postdoc in Switzerland, 16 years at St. Louis U, and nine years in, as a research scientist. What does that bring to the table? I've been the recipient in two different environments of the product of K through 16 education, not just K through 12, but K through 16 for Shell. What I've been concerned is the decline of the student skills, the student learning, and we are hurting as a country. We, international students are filling our graduate programs. Over 50 to 80% of our graduate programs in all technical degrees are international students. They are not being trained here in the US. That concerns me. We are losing out. And if you don't know, we are really losing out to China right now. I have two patents in AI this last year, and what I did at Shell is play to what's being done two, three years later, and China knows it. So I'll give you one reason why I'm running, and I haven't shared it, but I was looking over all the minutes of the school board for the last three years. There were 330 votes, line item votes, that required a yes or no by the board members. Of all the current board members I'm talking about, 330, how many do you think were unanimous? 329. There was one dissenting vote in three years. If anything, we need diversity of thought on the board to just start asking questions and maybe challenge some things that's being done.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I guess I'll take a little bit from kind of my opening. But what I, I think I'm really good at, there's two areas. The first is, I'm a very good listener, and I will listen and hear problems. I want to work to find common goals. I think that I'm a pragmatic individual. And in addition, I have quite an extensive business background negotiating with vendors and finances, and I've saved companies millions of dollars in expenditure thanks to streamlining and optimizing, especially in the field of IT. I think on the finance committee or vendor negotiations on the board, I could be a useful asset. I think voting for myself and David Kirschner here will bring a positive change to the board. It will reemphasize our district focus on academics. We will both advocate for transparency, including Lindbergh internal policies, curriculum, and decision-making. I can promise you this, we will not be beholden to interest groups, but only to you, the taxpayers, the voters. I invite the community to learn the story of our Melville Fire Department and how it was turned around from a failing department to being prosperous by setting the community, getting the community voices on their board, in much the same way Lindbergh schools could use new voices so the district can return to a path of excellence. In closing, I believe in the importance of the mission and aim for nothing short of restoring our blue-ribbon top school district status in the state. If you want academics, I'm your choice. If you want to get the politics and ideologies out of the classroom, I'm your choice. If you want to have a good steward of the taxpayer, I'm your choice. Thank you.
Thanks again, everyone, for being here tonight. I know that there is a lot of love for Lindbergh in this room, and I can feel it, and I'm just honored to share it all with you. My experience and integrity and commitment to our community are qualities that I bring to the table as a candidate. I always lead with good intent, and I extend grace when needed. And I understand that being a board member requires a lot of empathy. It requires understanding, and most importantly, it requires a willingness to listen and learn. I've been a part of the evolving work in the district for over the past three years, and I'm just committed to seeing this process through and remaining an integral part of Lindbergh's pursuit of educational excellence. I believe the district has made many strides in a positive direction, and so my goal is to ensure the continuation of these advancements. And it's important to know that this involves working on the things that are going well and also the areas that need improvement. I put consideration and care into my work on the school board. I'm an advocate for all students and their diverse needs. I believe that every student deserves access to a high-quality education that meets their individual needs and supports their unique talents and aspirations. I've never shied away from challenging the status quo and asking the tough questions because I believe in the power of continuous improvement. I always strive to know how and when we can do better because our students and our families and staff and community deserve nothing but the best. I consider myself a good listener and communicator, and I'm committed to hearing the voices of all stakeholders. I believe that open and honest communication is key to building trust and collaboration within our school district. So my vision for Lindbergh is one where every person feels safe, valued, and empowered to reach their full potential. I know that I can be a person that you are proud of to serve on this board. So again, I'm Megan Vetter, and I hope to have your vote on April 2. Thank you.
If I am elected as Director for the Board of Education, I will always put students first. I will work tirelessly to ensure that our students have the skills and knowledge to prepare themselves for however they define success after leaving us at graduation. Our students will be career and college-ready and prepared to meet the challenges of our ever-evolving world. As a member of the board, I will support our educators and staff. I will advocate for competitive wages and salary, for increased tools and incentives for teachers, and to recognize and reward those who go above and beyond for our students and our community. As a member of the board, I will work to enhance our students' educational experience through community partnerships. I will continue to emphasize the district's focus on developing programs and partnerships that provide real-world experiences through our Diploma Plus programs, which we didn't get to talk about tonight. So I would encourage you all to look at our website. They are amazing opportunities. I will also, as a member of the board, always keep fiscal responsibility at the forefront of my mind. As a member of the board, I will prioritize policies that support all students, bring facilities to the same level for opportunities, experiences, and safety for students across our district regardless of the building they attend, and I will prioritize those that support and promote communications and transparency between teachers, staff, administration, our community, and the Board of Education. Why do I want this job? I love Lindbergh. I love the people, the students, the teachers, the staff, the administrators. I love the programs, the focus on innovation, and how Lindbergh challenges itself to improve each and every year. I love what Lindbergh did for me. I would not, absolutely not, be where I am today if it were not for the education and the extracurricular activities and leadership opportunities that I received in Lindbergh. I also love what Lindbergh has done for my children, and I want to ensure that these experiences are available for all students in our district in the future. I would appreciate your vote on April 2, and I am first on the ballot. Thank you for being here tonight.
All right. Please join me in a round of applause for our candidates. So thank you to our candidates for participating. Thank you to our hosts and our volunteers and to all of you for coming out tonight and making this a successful event. If you found this forum to be useful, think about joining us. Become a member of the League of Women Voters, or make a modest donation if you appreciate the free services that we provide to educate voters. You can learn about the other candidates and the issues that will be on your ballot by going to our voter's guide at vote411.org. And of course, please, please vote. In-person, no excuse absentee voting starts on March 19, and then the polls will be open Tuesday, April 2, from 6 till 7. So please vote. You're lucky enough in St. Louis County to be able to vote at any polling place. So, thank you.